So that was just to say there's not a negative.
This is the new uploaded sheet. Previous and there was a negative number, there it should've been solved.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, several items here. Thursday got off to a relatively smooth start. We did have one glitch, which was with transportation. We do have Versatrans up and working, and this year we use Versatrans to create all of our postcards and get our software up and running with that. And as we noticed, some of our postcards did not get all the way through, and it looked like our pockets were west of Oak Park Trailer Park and our Candlewick. So Melissa and Patty spent extra time answering emails, phone calls, to try to make sure that we got everybody correctly to their buses. Our bus drivers are always good and patient on those first few days, which I thank, and I thank Melissa and Patty too for the extra time to try to make sure that those communications got out. So we'll sit down, we'll look, hopefully get that glitch straightened out, because as many of those things as we can have ironed out for the first day is always nice. So also, too, with transportation right now, we are kind of making sure that the dust settles, and we're making sure that we've got seats available in our riderships for our people that are looking for paid transportation. So we're trying to make sure that we get all of our required kids to school, and then this week, hopefully, we're going to start adding what we can then for our kids that are looking for paid transportation with seats available, so that, just to let you know on that. Our online registration, really, for the most part, has gone pretty smoothly. We are kind of down to those last few people that get finished it up. Usually, it's just an item or two within their registration information. We're going to use this week and next week to proactively reach out to them and hopefully get them ironed out for our first year here. We're trying to have some patience with it. Our hope is not to need it, but if we had to, in an extreme case, possibly use exclusion after Labor Day. But we're down to just a handful of kids, probably at the elementary level, and our numbers are really low at the lower at the middle school and high school. So our hope that as some of our letters and reach out to the communications, we get most of that wrapped up this week and next. Quick update on the facilities. We're down to the last few details at Manchester. We've got the gutters to finish, which will be done this week. We have skylights that are on order that will be in September 7th, and it'll take a couple hours to get those installed once those are in there. And the air conditioners installed at the library at Capron finished up. Last Tuesday and Wednesday were our initial institute days. Tuesday was for all of our staff. We all met together at the high school for professional development, and I've asked Carrie to give us a little summary of what we worked on there. And we've also got a curriculum committee meeting set. She was going to give a little preview as to what's going on in fact. So Carrie?
So in terms of institute day, we spent, we had our K-5 teachers get some training because they have a new math program this year into math from Houghton Mifflin, and so we had brought in Math Solutions, who is a Houghton Mifflin consultant. They did two trainings, one in the morning for K-2 staff and then one in the afternoon for our 3-5 staff, all around math strategies that really kind of helped students see the conceptual part of math before they moved to the procedural. So we spent some time doing that, supporting math. In terms of the curriculum committee, what will be coming up next week? I might have some things to share with the committee and then just get some feedback on. We do have the FY '20 curriculum plan in terms of the dates that I would like to meet with groups of teachers. We're going to continue working on math and science for K-12, and then we're going to add in ELA, English Language Arts and Social Studies, starting in fifth grade. We're going to hold off on the K-4 right now, just because they're so busy with learning new math. And so we're going to have them learn that first, and then we'll add in the K-4. And so we'll kind of talk about that plan and how I mapped that out for the year and what our goals would be for each team, so we'll talk about that with the curriculum committee. And then for part of that as well, I created a curriculum design process tracking document that will lead our teams through the process that they will use. So I'll share that at the committee, and this is all Kelly has posted it, so it is on, you can see the agenda with the documents. And we'll use it to track our progress, which I think will also give us a way to update to the board of where we are in that process, what things are in progress, what things are completed, and what things maybe just, we haven't started yet because we're not there yet in the process. And so I've done some initial vetting for math and science since we have already started the curriculum there, and I've already color-coded some things regarding what's completed and what is in progress, and then where we'll be going next. And then with ELA and social studies, we'll be starting from the beginning. So those will be some of those things that we share.
Superintendent's report, if anybody has any questions. Thank you. Thank you. Bring us to the committee reports.
The policy changes not bad, Mike. Is there anything upcoming outside of that?
Yeah, probably, we've just got some new stuff in, but we'll look to send dates sometime after later, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Have a good one, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Oh, yeah.
Number 24, I'm ready.
Kelly's going to argue too by getting up. We were started here too.
Mary, question, did you get a chance to look into that?
I haven't yet, but I do.
Because Tom also wanted us to look into that, to see whether we need to change our policy, amend the policy, or have a policy at all, or maybe even have a discussion about whether we want going in to count or not to count in the future.
Yeah, and that's on my calendar, we'll have on our.
Pull the policy.
Okay.
Do you want that to do, go ahead, Carrie?
Please, because it was my understanding, as I researched it, again, that was just a first research, that it should not count unless our policies specifically say it does.
Okay.
That the default is that they do not count.
Good.
So we change that if the board needs that, something we want to do. All right, thank you, Mary. Business services.
We have business services.
Facilities long-range planning.
We probably will leave here after Labor Day too, catch up a little bit.
CIA.
Coming Wednesday. August 20 through 45. Wednesday.
As long as we're on the committee reports, can I mention the changes?
Sure.
And ask for any volunteers? I went ahead and made the change because we seem to be down a board member. Moved Mr. Kinzer to business, the chair of the business services. And Mr. Rudy to CIA, the chair of CIA. And Mr. Hazelhorse has graciously offered to stay on the committee if nobody else is interested. Facilities long-range planning, Ed, you were willing to chair for that? And Mr. Hazelhorse said that he would be interested in also serving on that. And Mary, are you okay where you're at with the policy?
Yeah.
And so that leaves us with a opening in business services committee. If anybody wants to go chair with Tom, Tom may be fine with chairing alone, but it looks like last week's going to have to double up. So maybe think about that, if anybody has any interest.
I would stay there, so Tom is your.
Okay. Mary, did you have any interest in being on CIA?
Yeah, I can go back. I was on CIA previously.
Brian, you want to stay there?
I'd love to.
Okay. Brian there, if that's okay there.
Yeah.
Do you want to mind that, maybe on the facilities anymore than? No, I took you off since you were chairing, but do you want to stay there? I assumed you wouldn't want to stay there. I don't know why I assumed you had, though. Do you want to stay on the facilities?
Yeah, I would mind staying on the facility.
All right, I'm sorry, Brian, I misspoke. I just assumed Tom would want to be on both, I don't know why I did that, though.
I'll have a little talk later. Thank you, Thomas.
And if you guys have, if you were interested in discussing that, you can worry, you send me an email if you have a strong desire to serve multi, multi positions. Now that takes us to the consent agenda to approve the minutes of a regular meeting of July 23rd, the minutes of a special meeting of July 30th, personnel and overnight field trip requests regarding the foreign language trip.
Motion to adjourn to the consent agenda as presented.
Motion by Maxie. We have a second. We have a second by Malholl. We have a technical problem, it looks like.
Chair is in.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Hayley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
This is Maxie. Yes, Mr. Malholl?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Motion passes. Brings us to unfinished business. Approval of the tentative budget.
Yep, for the most part, the budget remains the same, similar to what's been presented in the past. Melissa does have a few more accurate numbers that she wants to share, but we're asking the board to approve the tentative budget so that we can adopt it at September.
So some good news, the preschool for all grant, we were granted that for this upcoming school year, so that's about $135,000 that we need to put back into that preschool program. So that was an exciting development this past week. So we got that, a budget of that in there. Also, we got our evidence-based funding. We're getting funded at about the same level as we were, well, the additional is about another $400,000 this year as we got it last year, so another bump up there, but we're still in the tier one for the evidence-based funding. As far as the tax, the levy we talked about, I kept the levy revenue at about the level that we got this year, knowing that the board's desire was to kind of keep it without that major increase, but then when we go to levy, we can talk about abatement and different options to kind of maximize that levy. But I kind of left the revenue as it was this year, just knowing that that's kind of a place that we want to look at going. If we want to levy more, obviously, we can, but we can kind of discuss that. I did move some money, revenue from our levy, from education into transportation, knowing that we have that bus cycle that we're trying to kind of do. So that was a couple changes that I made. This coming month, I'll look at expenditures, making sure that we're on with salaries and all that kind of stuff, making sure that's right. And the tentative budget will go to September to be approved for final budget. Any questions there?
I had a question, just from how you phrase that.
Yeah.
So last year, on the evidence-based, how much money did?
We've, in the last couple of years, we've gotten about $400,000 additional. So this year, we got another $400,000 additional on top of what we got last year.
So at the tail end, we were notified that there was an additional $400,000 that we were reducing. So it looks like our amount would be similar to what that funding was. Does that make sense?
Thinking, for some reason, I'm still struggling. When I think of new money.
Yeah, it's about $400,000 new money.
So it's, then we're up $800,000 compared to two years ago.
Yeah, because when they're funding, then they kind of do this stop loss where you can't go back. So either you get no new money or you get more new money, but they're trying not to let anybody lose money in the process, so.
Okay. So actually, it's $400,000 possible.
Okay, because we got the preschool bond too.
And I believe that preschool grant is a year-to-year. I don't think it was a multi-year, so we're going to hold on to it this year, which is great.
We have to apply for a year, or is it, we didn't keep it?
We have, every year, we have to apply for it, so potentially. Being a tier-one school, evidence-based funding, that helped us, I think, just because we have more of a financial need for that money, but it's hard to say you're tier one.
Under the new governor, it changed, it was competitive, and now it's kind of gone back towards the need-based.
So how did this affect our pre-K? What we had talked about when there was not going to be the funding, we hoped it gave us more latitude in what we could do. So are there now children on the waitlist for that now?
No, we still are, we still, based on, I think the last report was, is that we still didn't have all of our seats filled, I believe, but we still need all the guidelines that come with the pre-K career, so.
Any other questions? If there are none, I have a motion in the second, please, to approve the FY '20 tentative budget.
Motion that we approve the FY '20 budget as presented. Mary?
I have a second, sorry. Second by Mrs. Horace. Roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
This is Maxie.
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hayley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Brings us to substitute rates for '19, '20, '21.
Yeah, this has been on our agenda the last couple times. Melissa and I have had several conversations. We're looking for the board to approve our subrates tonight, also looking for discussion and thoughts. We've been looking to do what we can to increase our sub pool, incentivize some of our subrates, as well as try to reward those that take some of those short postings for jobs in those last second, when we know that those are hard to fill. So Melissa put together a little PowerPoint with some ideas that we threw together to kind of hit all three of those things with our subrates, helped her build on Melissa.
Yeah, so our substitute rates, and this is the same PowerPoint as we saw last time, so I won't go into great detail on this one, but if you want to scroll down, there was, we had talked about a couple different options for the subrates. One was just increasing it essentially by about 25 cents. The other one was moving it to the N-Bus base salary for those different categories as opposed to this. So this would be moving it to the base salary that N-Bus has, that was, and you can see I put the increase, or the new increase, what it was, and then kind of the percentage of the increase that it would be for those areas, for each of those sections. I also did a breakdown, I think it's on the next slide, of a couple scenarios. So option A is moving up everybody about 25 cents or so. Option B was moving to the base. I kind of got a general idea of how many subs for both, and kind of, just kind of gave an idea of what it would look like for cost. So as you can see, custodians, two of the two options, it'd be about $7200 more to increase option A, and about $7300 in option B. And when I was kind of looking down the list, I just feel like option B, moving up to everybody to the N-Bus, is not a huge difference in cost for the district, but I think it's for a person individually trying to sub, I think that can make a big difference in their pay. So I feel like that would be a great incentive for staff, is to move to the option B where we're just paying the base.
Of the contract.
Of the contract, yeah.
The other thing it does is it keeps us in pace with minimum wage pacing too.
Yeah, yeah. So those are just the differences, and those were just numbers, they're both on the same side, just to give an idea of what that would look like for the difference. The next slide that I have were just some of the incentives we had talked about. One of them was for working more days in a year. So if a substitute worked 25 to 50 days in June that following year, they could get a $50 bonus. They work 50 to 74 days, $100, and then more than 75 days, they could get a $200 bonus. So getting people to come back and work for the districts. Another incentive, and Mr. Kinzer had talked about this a little bit, this day of bonus. And I'm going to put a little bit of a caveat on this, saying, I'm not sure how easy this is going to be to monitor, and so I don't want to put something out there that we can't do for staff, but we are going to try it, and hopefully, with your guys, let's try it and see what it works. So the idea would be that if a staff posts, if an employee posted a job after 12:01 essentially AM of that day, and somebody, a sub, took that job, after five times of doing that, they could get a bonus. So every quarter, we would look and say, did you, you know, did you give up your day when you were planning to come and sub for us last minute, and then those people could get a bonus? So that was another idea that we kind of thrown around.
And that was one of the big trends, that those day-of reports for subs, our fill rate was so low, so we were trying to find some way to recognize reward and incentivize.
And that was $50 for doing that five times.
Yes, yes. So every quarter, we'd look at it and say, who pulled a job the day of? Did they do it five times? And then they could get a bonus that way.
We did talk about being able to make sure we track it, because the one thing we don't want to do is not be able to track it fairly and have it cause more angst than anything. So we're trying to make sure that we've got ways to track it and then keep it in their eyes so we can really pay it out.
So my suggestion with all of these incentives would be to try it for a year and see, you know, is it actually increasing our staff, are our substitutes finding it valuable? Is that bringing in more people on that come again next year? The last one was staff referral. We have a staff referral program for our other areas in the district. If there's an opening, you can get referral. This would just be if you refer a substitute. Right now, they're not in that staff referral, so if you refer a substitute to the district and they work more than 10 days.
I thought on that too, was you've got a few big districts right now looking to go to the staffing route, and maybe some of our subs will come in and pull ups, and so that might be a chance for us to capture maybe a few more people into our pool for the time.
And then some non-monetary things, we had kind of talked about this, was just encouraging people to call in early, the detailed plans, you know, we talked about just that communication between the sub and the employee, and then utilizing some other staff. Any questions on the substitute?
Thoughts and discussion too.
Is $50 for five times incentive enough?
Then I don't know. I don't know if it's going to be enough.
I get that that would be hard to monitor, I understand that.
Yeah.
And maybe, yeah, maybe there's a better idea for it.
Yeah, I'm open to ideas. I don't know what it would take for someone to go out and go, you know what I mean? Like, it's hard to say what would cost them to do it.
And we do know that some have preferences for age levels, buildings, and all that type of stuff too, so.
And that's why we didn't do like an executive or something like that, because if you're not a high school teacher, we don't want, you know what I mean? We want people that are best fit too, so.
How do you communicate these incentives?
That would be another question, is we're going to have to do some kind of.
Probably do something through the ROE, our social media, our website, and all that stuff, too. ROE just give our information out there to, as people come in to sign up.
Yeah, they give all of our sub lists and sub pays, so the ROE would be a great choice. Also, we're in multiple subs too, just kind of staying down, talking them, I don't know what we're doing.
Any other questions?
So before we were having discussions about increasing our rank, where we slid for subs, what are these two scenarios taking?
As far as salary-wise, let me look for a pair, let's get your mind out there. I do not have it on here, I apologize, because I can't answer that question right now. I know for like pairs, we were kind of in the middle, so we're probably going to be probably three quarters, not at the top, I don't think, but I can't answer that question.
So the scenarios I had, I'm sorry to interrupt, you understand, so the numbers over there, and that's what the new money would cost us in each category.
Potentially, yeah. And that's just off a general idea, like 75 positions in custodians, what it would look like, or, yeah, so it was just a general idea of what the potential new money could be for both scenarios.
Been a rough history, while we've been used.
Yeah, the pairs, I was able to pull numbers, the custodians and the coasts and such was a little bit more difficult, so I just generated some numbers for that, but. So this is the new, my recommendation for the new subpay rates, also that it's retroactive to July 1st, because we had had some custodians and even house professionals working in subpay and teachers as well.
Would you like to see to the motion? And if not, I have a motion in the second. Further questions today, we should start with that. Anything else?
What's your plan for evaluating how effective it is? Mid-year, are you looking at numbers after the fall semester's finished?
Yeah, I think mid-year, probably December, January, I could come out to the board and share sort of what our subrates are looking like. I think just a general maybe survey to the subs, like how are, how is it going? Was there anything that brought you back to North Boone? Is there anything that's keeping you in North Boone, you know? What do you think of our, so maybe just doing a general idea of what's bringing people back to North Boone? Because it's not just money for everybody, some of it's just people love working for North Boone, you know? So there's some things that we can just capitalize on that doesn't cost money. So, yeah, I could definitely reevaluate until January for you guys, and then again, maybe, so.
I'd like to go back to a revisit with administrators, so we have a protocol for getting feedback to subs and making sure that they got the information, because we haven't touched it a little bit, and we want to probably make sure that we got similar protocols across the board.
We would know by January, go, we're going to have an update?
Yeah. I mean, February was our lowest month, so that one, we won't be able to, but I think by January, we'll be able to tell.
Especially if the pool is present.
Melissa, we oftentimes see a group of cohorts and where we fall in line, and does this put us so early in the 25th, 75th percentile, or we're still?
For pay?
Yeah.
And Mr. Malholl, I don't have the exact numbers, I apologize. We were kind of in the middle before, so I'm guessing that does put us a little bit closer, because we are increasing them as months, so. I do know that our sub teacher salary will be higher than some of the surrounding districts, which is a good thing for us, because some of them are still at nine a year.
Further questions? I have a motion in the second for the approval of the sub rates of pay for various substitute categories.
I, we set the pay rates at the suggested, in these categories, at the suggested rates with a board review in January, adjusted numbers.
So motion, you're going to, or you're suggesting, B, I believe, is your suggestion. I'll second. So since more option B, real for A, understood, if you mentioned, right, we have a motion in the second, roll call, please, Kelly.
So option B includes the bonuses?
Yes. Well, yeah, yeah, those incentives, yes.
The bonus, the bonus suggestions, we should probably.
The incentives were for either one, so that's up to you guys which ones you want.
I'm just trying to follow how the motion matches, I have.
Yeah. We have to let it fail now, we have a motion in the second, to let it fail, yes? Because we can't amend it, we can't amend the motion. Withdraw. The motion in second. I withdraw, okay?
Sorry.
Mr. Rudy? Officially withdraw?
I withdraw my motion.
All right. So we would like the motion to read. Option B, understood, the set rate with the option B, if it was good, then we'll review it in January and the bonus pay.
Recommend the subs for overall.
Is that encompass everything?
There's three incentives for it.
Staff for parole, pay for parole, incentive for parole.
Yes, there's three, three incentives.
Okay. Is it retroactive to July 1st? It's going to be July 1st. That's all I can do. Should I state that again?
What was the motion?
We don't have a motion. I move to set rates of pay of various substitute categories as suggested by option B below with the incentives, let's see, okay, for working days, for amount of days worked, day of bonus incentive, incentive for parole incentive, retroactive as of July 1st.
With the understanding that?
With the understanding that we will be reviewing this.
I'll do one quick, Mr. Rudy. I'll second. Thank you, Mr. Horace. So we have a motion in a second. Now we're ready for roll call.
This is Maxie, yes. Mr. Malholl?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhorse?
Yes.
Mr. Hayley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Brings us to board goals. So after a discussion with Mike and a realization that many of what we were about to set as our larger board goals, he will be working on, we narrowed it down to these, and I took the liberty of adding names after it, because I was still hoping that people would still sort of, I don't know how we want to put or take ownership, or take the lead, or hold its hand through the month-long processes that will this one tail. Is everybody okay with those board goals? We don't need to vote on this, but I wanted to present the finalized product to you, get everybody's opinions. Those are relatively vague, and almost all of them have the asterisks next to them, they all have an asterisk next to them, meaning that they are our plans to gather material to perhaps next year, set as a, have a outcome that we desire, and to set that as a goal next year. We've got a lot of planning to do, a lot of data gathering to do, much of which, of course, Mike is adding in our. much of which, of course, Mike is admin, and our, our district people will be doing. But I just thought, you guys may or may not feel that occasionally things get brought up that feel rather big, but then they get sort of lost over the months when something else bigger comes along. And I thought if we set people, these names next to them, and we set them on the agenda, Mike and I are trying to find a place to set them in the agenda, so we keep coming back to them. And it is my feeling, hopefully, that we would have something bullet-like or spiral-bound-like that we'll be able to follow through the processes, because, again, I, something I feel happens is that we mentioned something about curriculum one today, and five months down the road, Kerry presents it, and we can go, "Did we talk about that?" Or, "We don't remember that," but if we had, if we were following along with some of these plans, and something that was contained, Kerry could remind us of the agenda, take a look at that portfolio again, and look back at what we had done, because this is where, where we're about to go, and this is the next step that we're at. Sound eventable to everybody?
One of the things that I wondered about when I saw your, was that there were a couple things that I... You say at the beginning of this, these are kind of general, but when I look at this, some of the things to me aren't, is... It seems like some of our goals were stated more specifically or covered than what other ones were. And the two that were kind of of interest to me, and one of them was, um, the graded centers, let's say. I can look for that and kind of see where it fits in here, but then I don't kind of see, I, I don't know if that's gonna be addressed to the detail that I was hoping it would be addressed this year. And the other thing is the safety piece of it. It's, to me, that, for me, it's our school safety plans and resource officers and things that I want to look at. But I, I got kind of an "and" saying, and I don't know if that's gonna be covered to the detail, detail that I would like it covered to. And part of the reason I wanted the detail was that I'm okay, if I'm only one of seven that think about it, then let's not cover it. But now I feel like when you make it this generic, how do you know if what I have is as important that Mike should be spending the time on it, is what the other ones were, and that's, I felt like we got detail, and then you took it back, and then you took it out. And now I don't know, again, how we're prioritizing it, or what...
Understood, understood, and, and I can see you reading into, reading that into what we've done here, but we definitely planned on including safety, and we could have left it as an entirely separate bullet. It's just that Mike felt that was something he was going to be already doing in social and emotional needs. And that's why I also put that on the line in close cooperation with, I would expect you or Mary, or maybe both of you, will be on Mike to ask, "Is this reminding him, is this gonna be part, because we said this is a goal?" And I'd like to see, Mike is always asking us what we want, "What do you want to see?" And I would expect that if it's that passionate to you, that you guys will be discussing that, and I would imagine, just the word "safety", I don't care to mention anybody's gonna give you a thumbs down on whatever it is that you'd like to see. But these are our goals to set, so you can make it more specific if you'd like to.
So the bullet points that were suggested by the board are still there. The goals are written marginally, but they're still there. What I would do is work then with the chairperson of each of them. Because some of those bullet points that you're talking about, that we specifically can hit more than just one or two committees. Some are gonna hit business, some are gonna hit curriculum, some will hit, you know, all those different things. So I was like, how do I work, maybe work with a couple chairs through some of those discussions to start figuring out how to get our arms around how we want to forward the dress, if that makes sense.
And in my mind, how this would work, as Mike creates the social and emotional needs plan, that I'm thinking will be a physical thing, he will flip through and go, "This isn't as much as I'd like to see," or "I'd like to see more," or "This is a different direction than I'd like to see," go.
And I guess, what my concern was going into this, was that, and part of why we had the group discussion, was that we had a group consensus on what we thought the priorities were. And if you knew that going into your assignments, into your bullet points, what the specific major items were, then there wouldn't be a chairman's discretion, well, that's, you know, that it would drop back on, or that something would happen.
It's not a chair's discretion, I, I see this as us all working together and deciding that, because those are the things we did decide. Okay, everybody, I left the word "safety" up there. We did take, um, graded centers out, as you noted, because we were perhaps concerned that leaving that as a bullet point would become something that someone caught and ran with. But again, being just plans, we don't want people to see graded centers or... Concerned people would see the word "graded centers," and think, "We're moving in that direction." But that would be part of large-scale facility plan.
Investigation.
Investigation, yes, investigation. If that's a camera, I'd say investigation, in case anybody watches these. Investigation.
Study.
Because that would be something that would take a long time to look into, to talk to business services, to talk to our curriculum. If it's the right direction to go, to talk to business services, can we even do this? Perhaps within three months, we'll know this isn't economically nor curricular wise decision. All of these, again, being plans. But I don't see anything, and maybe those being vague allows us to stick anything in to him and curriculum and business and facilities and say, incorporate this, again, just a plan. As long as there's no action, I don't, I don't see any harm in being vague. But I think it's worth that, those plans. Oh, Jim, and doesn't work as an abbreviation, so... They will, yeah, okay. Tom, if you would, eh, don't feel, I hope you don't feel that this in any way diminishes what the direction that you want to go, see, because I think we all saw those original bullets, this is just a rewriting of those bullets. I could rewrite them again, if we'd like to extend this another month. Perhaps over the next few months, we probably will be beginning to add some fairly specific bullets to that. Each physical document will have main headings underneath it and sections to it, I would imagine. Mike has noted all of these, though, and as we sat down and talked, most of these were already in his own personal superintendent goals. So they weren't very disparate from what he planned, he was so gun towards them. And there's no vote required on this, this is just information. Please let me know, though, if your name, you do not want your name, or you want your name added to another one, if anybody wants to, feels passionately about any of those. And I would imagine lots of us will be tending, lots of those curriculum, business, and facilities meetings anyway, so our, all of our names could go after them, it's not maybe really useful to have one person.
That's a assumption, and if those things are completely done, it may break.
All right, no further discussion, that brings us to review of transportation, serious safety hazards.
Yes. During last school year, we received a letter from the Department of Transportation recommending that residents on the south side of 173 in Capron became hazardous, um, uh, crossing. The DOT recommends hazardous routes, but it's up to the school boards whether or not they want to recognize it. And if we do end up recognizing it, we now make transportation available to our students for those areas that are hazardous, and then it also becomes reimbursable, reimbursable from the state. We are recommending that that Capron route on the south side of 173, that we now change and make that a recognized hazardous area. We have started that, we have started to transport those kids, just based on, and the letter from the Department of Transportation said, based on the volume of traffic, that has increased steadily over the years, so we make that a hazardous area that recommendations. So at last meeting, Melissa and I asked the table, that we really wanted to make sure that we understood the process and why it was being recognized the way it is, so... Like I said, we currently have those students on the bus routes, with the idea of moving forward with that recommendation.
As you highlight, of all of those lists, just Capron, are we already doing something different, busing different? All the, all the rest of them, we just haven't been to the Capron?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, the other two have already previously been on the list?
Yes, everything else has been on the list, except for the Capron, that was a new one. There was a pop-up group one on last month, that one is still under review, there was some incorrect information before from IDOT, and so we're kind of still going through and through that. That, we gotta review this whole school year, to see what's going on there. Um, detailed ones that have the information that we've already got, providing transportation for those students.
I've learned a lot about that process in the last three weeks. It's quite a process.
Maybe we'll need to, you'll need to revisit these yearly to make sure those remain hazardous, and there aren't any more?
Typically, we do in July.
Supposed to, there are being combined, so we have to read these and prove these are here. Because like Mike said, poor witches all would require it.
My motion is, I'm curious about the impact that has had on the Capron school.
Oh, in the mornings, um, for drop-off and pickup? I don't know, I could ask them, listen to...
Yeah, I've been meaning to follow up on that, too, because I, I'm hoping that it has a good, a good impact on our parking lot there. So I, I'll try to get that information for you guys.
So does this mean for anybody, again, watching the video, curious about what we're talking about, there's now a bus that at some point in time south of 173, all those residents are waiting there to get on a bus, just to be sure?
We've scheduled it to the actual bus.
Into the bus routes?
Bus routes, yes.
Okay.
So, transport to the school.
Brian had a motion...
I have a motion to approve the transportation safety, as you guys presented.
Motion in a second. I have a motion in a second, roll call, please, Kelly.
Mr. Mahalas?
Yes.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Haveli?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mrs. Mancy?
Yes.
Motion passes, that brings us to new business, the August 2019 bills.
Oh, wait.
Get any?
We had...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ed, yes, brings us to playground.
I guess, I meant, it would've been easier if these are in different order, but I've been watching the, the momentum project that Allison asked for before. Go in, as I go back and forth to work, and noticed that at some point last week, that essentially fences went down both sides, but the whole project wasn't done to the extent that, I guess, I thought it was going to be done. My understanding is that the momentum of funding away from the project that was assumed to be there, and I guess what I was looking for was to go to the decision to say, it was our intention, we're gonna do this whole project, the bank stop and all of it. Right now, that project is essentially been done temporarily, no fencing's been submitted, it's all incorporated in. And we're just looking for us to essentially say, well, we're calendar year, plenty, plenty, we did back topside in high school, there's some of the newest things that we have in the district, it just seems to me that that whole project should have, should have been back to us with the funding changed forward, you know, the money that we needed to finish the project, we had to change, and to get proactive and transparent, they've gone back to us and said, in order for you guys to get this project, we think it should have been, uh, a nice little money.
Thank you for sharing that, I was not aware that funding got pulled back, but I would agree with you, trying to keep moving forward, do it the right way.
I remember talking with Allison, I think that night, that we were the first board, board goals, and we were sort of brainstorming ways they could make more money. Did, we get a lot of money for that?
She grew up the project in front, and I really think it was a bit, it was expensive to the district.
I'm just trying to remember that process, her money she gave.
She had, yeah.
For the project, and, and, I guess, make the situation changes, and, again, of course, I said before, you know, there's something to do, you know, that is something, but, so, hey, we're gonna do this on the right order, and it needs some help, you know, that's all I'm looking for.
And I'd agree, if we're gonna do a little school with the right way, we, we've talked all about making sure our facilities look good, I think that that follows everything that we're trying to do. I guess I look for direction from the board, technically, if it's under ten thousand, and I had the board's support, I could just keep moving and keep it going. Um, if the board would prefer me to bring something back with quotes and information, um, I could do that, if the board wants to do both, and then we just do a follow-up in September, we can do any one of those combinations, but...
Make sure there's money there for continuing to keep it up. Still have a dollar, basically, that's in, I'm gonna take, so, that's it.
And I agree, Brian, we have a, we've seen two projects, and they look great for a while, and then they, they aren't maintained, and they fall apart in the heart, back to the same situation, having to put money in them to completely do a whole new project, make this money, especially if they got disrepair.
So I'd love to do it, and I'd also like to see a plan of how we're gonna, how it's gonna be used, and how we're gonna keep it up.
I think we got, we got a guy in, in terms of, we should be able to take care of that.
Absolutely, I just want to make sure that's on his, you know, bodies are developed, or you two want...
I guess the part that I would look on this, do you know how much money you're talking about on this?
I didn't know. Oh, I didn't, I didn't know. I did do an investigation, just how many so it's insane, you know? I think the people that were asked to charge to do it had a hundred dollars to spend, that's what I've done. And now looking at, cast lame words versions, anyway, just like to see the project get done. But the part of the playground is gonna be part of this, too. I don't know, let's just jump ahead and address it, right? Because essentially, we had, we had one set aside for, uh, the playground in Capron for 3K. I think volunteers did that, probably.
Oh, yeah, volunteers, I'll do that.
The fence in the rock, and actually, it's a good rock, so there's playground, but it's still laying on the ground, the Capron has not been installed. A lot, a lot of the safety barriers and stuff that were all intended to go inside the fence. So, I mean, that's a couple of years in, now, somebody should have come to us at some point and said, "Our volunteers, they have to stay, get disperated, and fix the problem, can't yet, maybe shouldn't have playground, go and sit on the symbol, apparently here."
I guess, and the, the part where I would want to take a step back on this, is that as a part of the facilities planning, you go through and you look at what our budgets are, and, well, you have, you know, the authority to spend ten thousand dollars, but you're looking at some of those little things to knock out in the budget. Ten thousand can be significant, or, or could help the playground at Manchester or something else. So if a building principal comes up to you and says, "I just want to let you know what I'm doing here, but this is the project that we're doing, and it's gonna be at no cost to the district," you cut out your facilities person at that point on oversight and review, and then when it comes up short, I'm hesitant. There's a part of me that says, "Okay, if we need to come up with up to ten thousand dollars to make this right, I'm fine with that." But then going forward, I want a different set of rules going into play when we say, "We're not gonna have oversight, because the building principals take care of it," but then we end up taking care of shortages at the end of the day. To me, you can't have it. I get the part where you want to make this right, but I don't like that it's setting the precedent going forward, because that's part of why, you know, it is, you can't have it to be both ways, and so I'm not... I'm fine with not having a half-done project, but I would really like to take this back as a lessons learned, look at the pieces that were done, why was our facilities people left out of it, or how, and how do we, at this point going forward, bring them back in?
I totally agree with you, I was thinking, so, why we created an environment where something couldn't be done the right way, that we don't want to, don't want to talk about this.
Okay, yeah.
So I think what happened, what's happened there, you know, that this playground, that Capron, this two or three years old, it has been, I, I mean, everybody that's had Capron knows it, they sometimes, sometimes, I'm sitting here.
That's what I'm wondering, was the facilities oversight taken away? I mean, when Allison said she was gonna do this, does that mean our facilities person doesn't still sort of?
No, we usually make sure the facilities guys, we make sure, I was not, we're told, fine, I was...
I mean, when I said I'm not, I mean, no, it's version, I think that, I, I, I'm a person, that's how I feel about it. I would just like to see this project escape over here, just like Tom said, not comfortable to have a lot of processes. For example, if the playground against its cautious uses, Capron does, it's probably a lot of issues, playgrounds in this little district.
And our facilities person needs to be a part of that, just to make sure that we're within, um, school codes, regulations, and everything else. Because sometimes, good intentions, um, we still gotta make sure that we, I get back to, I want to make sure it looks good, and...
But to me, a simple way to take care of that, Mike, is if that were, and throw out a number of, that were ten thousand dollar project, project, then that should still end up on the facilities committee plans, and it just has a different line on where it's being funded from. committee plans, and it just has a different line on where it's being funded from, but that way, it gets reviewed by the committee, it's reviewed by...
Yeah, and I don't remember the number we threw out, but we were nowhere near what Allison, I don't think it was anywhere near 10,000, when we initially talked about it back then. I wanna say that there was a Malvanna fund, and there was a matching PTO.
I think she was talking, I think she was talking about five.
I don't know.
Twenty, hundred bucks, I just, I just stick it in my mind, but I mean, I don't know.
She also wasn't talking about, she was like, this was just, it 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 was just.
So it was a smaller scale project, that's, I get where you're coming from. Fences are, it kinda makes it harder to work around with the rest of it too.
And it never used to be, and I've, I've been gone for a while, but it never used to be that just because of entrepreneurship was coming in, that that mean the super district didn't have, what's the right term, ownership, oversight.
That's what I'm trying to wrap my mind around, and when you thought, just because volunteers didn't work, that didn't mean that we checked out, you know, so. Has that not been on facilities?
Like I said, it's the first thing made of money.
I'm not thinking about the Malvanna thing.
They've been aware of it.
But it didn't go before the facilities funding?
No, it did not come before the facilities, it just came to the board.
Okay.
But our facilities people were aware.
That money was essentially donated, so it was just a, that's a project, and when the previous superintendent didn't want to spend that money, we do that, it just said, it never got spent, so.
What are we looking to do then?
Just, we're just talking about it for, for the next facilities meetings.
But in the meantime, I just kinda like to see this get off, so, so, keep kicking this hand on the road, around some reasons, because they're yelling at us, so, you know, it doesn't, so, I realize this has to be an information, I kinda thought that because it's been on his previous business, that we could have this conversation, and just give instructions, plus, you know.
But like what Mike said, he's got the spending authority on that anyway, I would just like, I'm not in any disagreement on what you're saying, but I would like if you do decide to go forward with it, to finish it, that you wrap a report back to the facilities committee, and you can put that as an item on the, on the future agenda.
That takes care of E and F, that, that, that takes care of E and F, at the next facilities meeting, that will be on the agenda, which would be, that's, that's a charge now.
And we, we're okay with, with Mike, $10,000, but Mike, why do you take care of the expense of, or, or do you wanna see it, maybe on the first?
No, I'm, we're just, again, my assumption is this falls within Mike's discretion, and that is, and I'm just asking that even though it falls under his discretion, that it's summarized and brought back to the facilities committee, so that maybe we could make recommendations for similar projects going forward.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed, appreciate it.
That brings us to August 2019 bills.
Collected bills, motion to approve.
Motion by Hazel Horse. Second by Madison. Roll call, please Kelly.
Mr. Rudy?
Yes.
Mr. Hazel Horse?
Yes.
Mr. Harely?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Motion passes. This is to site-based reporting.
Yes. As we've been reporting, and on our report card now, requires us to report site-based funding. We began to share this with the board last year, communicate this, this is just informational, but we wanted to keep this in front of the board so that they can see how the site-based information looked. Now, Melissa, we've had it in front of you a few times, she's kinda typing some of the numbers up, and we'll let her go through that.
Yes, so the whole idea of this is just creating clear financial transparency for community members, also being able to use that data to make decisions, especially when you're wrapping up curriculum, all the difference between programming and needs into one. Our, the SSA, the average student succeed tax requires now that all districts do this, it's being reported on our report card. Before, it was reported by district, so it showed like our revenues, our expenditures district-wide, now it's per school, and what we're spending per student, per school. So this is what it used to look like, you can kinda see, this is probably still gonna be there, but now, there's gonna have this site base included with it, with the numbers per students. This is our first year doing this, this is the first year for everyone doing this across the district, across the state, and it'll be about October when it's released with our report card. So our data, for every line item in our budget, so there's tons, right, probably over 1,000 or 1,000, so every little, every line, we had to decide if it was applied to one certain school, if it was applied to a district, and I had to decide whether it was, should be spread across every student, or across our special ed population, our ELL population, our low income. So just so you kinda nice know, that this was like a step-by-step kind of decision-making as I went. All of our O and L was divided among the square footage and the buildings, so that's kinda some of the philosophy that we used to get the numbers we did. So the next slide will show, one of the things that we did was percentage of students. So you'll see the high schools at the top of 30%, Papa Grove and middle school are about 17%. So like, our district-wide salaries, let's say for fiscal, my salary per se is spread across, 30% of my salary went to the high school, you know, 17% went to the middle school, so just to kinda give you an idea of how that was spread that way. The other way we did it was special ed. This was one of the driving factors, I feel like, in the split and some of the numbers that we'll see later. You'll see that Capron and Papa Grove are at the highest of 22%. Papa Grove has just more special ed students with their life skills program there, and Capron has more students with special needs because of the preschool program there, so they just are housing more, serving more, it's just student programming needs, we're just giving services to the kids in those buildings and what they need. So you'll find that Capron and Papa Grove are the highest, they're at 22%. The low-income numbers, this is polled from the state as well, you'll see our high school, it's one of the highest of 25, Capron and Manchester, or Capron Middle School, about the same, at the 15, 17% there. And this is kinda where we, we fell at the end of the day, when we looked at everything. As you can see, kinda the average across the district, if you go to the far right, the total per student average spending was about 11,322. You can see, Capron is at our top at 13,000, and this is kinda been a trend with Capron being at the top. The preschool is one reason why you're taking that preschool money that was spent, and you're dividing it among 49 students, as opposed to taking a whole school salary and dividing it among, so there's just, there's that concentration there. If you remember me telling you too, that Papa Grove and Capron had the highest percentage of special ed in their buildings, and you can kinda see that those two are the highest two across the district too. So obviously, there's other things applying a factor to, our salaries are about 70 to 80% of a budget, and so, when I looked at the salaries, the salary line for each school, it was pretty much in order of also the spending here too. And that's not, that is just basically...
How it fell.
How it fell. Principals hired, the boss fit for their schools, and then, you know, we staff it that way, and so, the money is not a driving factor for how we place staff, and so this is, some of the stuff is just kinda how it fell. I don't believe that any of these numbers indicate that one school's not getting services that they need to, like, I feel like the programming, the stuff is driving, is driven by the students, but this is just kinda where our budgets fell, and really overall, they're pretty close to our average there. Any questions or anything that I can help further explain this?
The state's model doesn't want it equal across the board, they want the site-based funding and the distribution of money to go where the services are needed for school with students, so that's kinda why I think they're making us do this too, so it's not just to spend equally across the board, the money goes to the students that need the services, is what the state wants.
And you'll see the shift too, like, now with our preschool from funding back, you know, our, our federal funding per student may go off at Capron, or if we have a pack of kids that need special services, go to a different school than the fund, you know, so this is going to change and fluctuate as the year so high. Hopefully, we'll get it down a little bit, but hopefully, we can use this data too to say what's going well, or what's, where do we, you know, just kinda using it to drive student.
Melissa, I'm not sure you were here back when we had a discussion like this before, but do you remember when we looked at the schools and they were quite different, it looks very spread out now, is that, were we looking at the same data?
Yeah, so, I did that about a year ago when I was doing the budget, because I was trying to say, you know, this is coming, and we knew, and this was kind of a spread that we saw too. It's not as bad as it was when we first looked at it last year at this time, but upper and middle at that point still were, were on the lower end of the other schools, so yes, we have done.
We had to really talk about line for line item, about really what needs to go there, based on whether it was percentage of staff or a service that a building had. We, maybe what used to be district expense, not be assigned to schools, so we had to make sure that we were reporting it kinda accurately with whatever was there at that school, so that took quite a while, and like you said, there's a lot of lines to go through. So it's almost kinda good, we started doing that last year, so we started to really kinda decipher it in specific with the data.
It's odd, because I really thought that there'd be an opportunity to look at the data and differentiate, and, well, some trends, but you look at this, and you see that the upper elementary had 248 kids, it's the best value of the school this year, it's out, I guess probably, our, our average staff, our, our, our teachers, you really expect it, you know, those things to include, it's absolutely true, so, I think, if they get asked on budget, I'm not sure, for instance, it's actually something, well, by the usual, special ed students, that should be across the schools.
Well, like, with all of our special ed costs, I divided, they get divided among the percent of special ed students, so like Papa Grove has 22%, or a total number of special ed students in the district, so they get just 22% of the special ed costs, whereas so did Capron, because they had 22%, whereas upper, I think only had 11% or something, so they only had 11%, and special ed budget is about 1.7 million, so it's a big chunk of our budget that kinda got shifted that way. I agree that Papa Grove does have some teachers, but they have some other teachers too, so there's, there's, there's a spread there, I mean, like, all of our schools kinda have a spread, but I just feel like upper, and when I looked at just salaries alone in regular ed, per student, upper was the lowest compared to the other ones, and they were the lowest for special ed, for student too. It's not that the kids aren't getting services, it's just that that's just the way that the expenditures fell, as far as percentage of students there.
Will we back up one line on this, and you talked, tell us about what the difference was between site-level expenses and centralized?
Yeah, so the site-level expenditures were all of our budget items that were specific to that site, so like Papa Grove, regular education salaries, all of those salaries were staffed only at Papa Grove, whereas centralized costs are fiscal services, like, my, my business department is a centralized cost because it's spread across the entire district, because everybody uses it, so that was the difference, and so, the centralized costs were a little bit closer aligned, because they were kinda spread, whereas the site-based was a little bit, so that's the difference.
Thank you.
Yeah, and if anybody wants to see that spreadsheet, I'd be happy to share it, so you can kinda see how the, the whole thing.
Any other questions?
Not a vote, just more information. Thank you, Melissa.
Melissa, once again, you do a fantastic job.
Thanks.
I feel like the last two months have been Melissa's show.
Sorry.
All right, that brings us to executive session, unless I'm mistaken, there's nothing to go, anything you want to say?
I think the thing that brought up the changing committee assignments, maybe a good topic, maybe have a brief executive session.
That, based on what I've got to put down, and, like, topics for, yeah, because I have only down personnel, collective party.
Put your name and head down. We should have a little bit more time to research our options before we, but we probably will be bringing that to executive.
I'm not looking for, I'm looking for information, just a status or what's?
Oh.
No action, no, nothing other than a, than a status.
But based on, I think, based on what we've listed as potential executive session, is that, it's, if I remember correctly, that issue is to be discussed and open. I don't know where that would fall under, exactly, is that personnel?
That's not personnel. That's not personnel. Conversation about it, or, it's not, it's information.
If I'm the only one, one conversation.
Otherwise, I was gonna say, we can maybe reach out, give each of the board members a status, I hope, of what we'll do, because we've still got some things that we're working on, so, I think that's fair.
I'm not, okay, I'm, I can have a, there's a part of me that, I was under the impression that anything that was discussed that had to do with informational only, and yeah, I, maybe I should have, okay, that's, I, I'm trying to think if the agenda would have had to have been, amended to discuss it, because I believe we've talked topics other than what...
They're clearly informational.
They're informational, but...
I guess, based on the nature of that situation, situation, I would rather keep one-on-one with you, until we have more.
But it would seem more appropriate to me to discuss something one-on-one, because in private nature in an executive session, that I'm fine with doing it that way, I just feel like, yeah, I need to sustain something.
Again, I believe, here to discuss that, if you're willing to do it or not.
That's surprising.
That's surprising to me also. That came from a good source.
Okay.
All right. Last, all we need is a motion and a second to adjourn, there's no further business to put the board?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? All opposed? Thank you, folks. Thanks for coming, folks.
Thank you, Melissa.